...for 2015 Board of Selectmen's Store Commissioners Meeting. Everyone is present, reading and substance some minutes from previous meetings, October 19th, 2015, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
October 21st, 2015, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
October 21st, 2015, Executive Session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have five more minutes for public hearing. We can do a... Okay, yeah. New business, request from Christ Lutheran Church for transient rented license to sell Christmas trees beginning to November 20th, Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. until all trees are sold.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Incurrence of appointment of Janet Johnson, Nine Wood Street, for Scholarship Committee effective November 5th, 2015, for term to expire April 30th, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Incurrence on the appointment of Janet Johnson, Nine Wood Street, for the Cultural Council Committee effective November 5th, 2015, for term to expire April 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Incurrence of the appointment of Karen Photos in the Scholarship Committee as a designated of the school effective November 5th, 2015, for term to expire April 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Incurrence on the appointment of Philip Malat, 8 Emily Drive, to the Facilities Invitation and Strategic Planning Committee effective November 5th, 2015, for term to expire on April 30th, 2017. I have to recuse myself from this vote, I did business with him.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just recuse myself, okay. Consider a request from Historical Commission to write a letter of support for the nomination of the Beeman Memorial Public Library to the National Register.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a call from the Historical Society, asking for our support. They've been working for years to try to get this done because of the addition and all the other things, so they're looking very forward to having it done.
We've done, I think we've done something like this probably.
We did it for the cemetery thing.
For the church, yeah.
So Nancy should be able to figure out some sort of letter.
I know that she worked really hard to get this done.
Looking at, I just want to make sure, looking at all the material is provided. We can, it doesn't limit our ability to do anything we want with this building in the future, correct? Is that a correct statement as far as we have to do changes, we have to do something?
I think it would probably have some, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
The director of the library is maybe.
Oh, great.
My understanding is that it does not affect us in the research. If we needed to change out the those of those kinds of appears to the.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledgment of a letter from Karen and David Eckert, they sent a letter to the Fifth Committee, they're saying how hard we work for the senior center and they gave just a letter of support for us. I just want to acknowledge them. Acknowledging Trum Town Minister's office schedule for the remainder of the year. Think anybody got a notice on that?
Yeah.
Should we tell the public?
Sure, it's gonna work, two days, do you want to tell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm coming up against my caps, as a Massachusetts retiree, I can only work so many hours in Massachusetts public employment in a given year. I'm, this week, 73 hours shy of that, which means, and I work six hour, well, I'm credited for six hour days here, and so that's 12 days. If I'm off unpaid Thanksgiving week in the last two weeks of the calendar year, you know, around the Christmas holidays, that affords two, two days for, for the remaining few weeks. As always, I'm available 24/7, you know, I'm, you know, responsive to calls and emails on off days and things like that, that's out of the gate, but it's a cap issue.
Okay.
And the plan was we would have had a town administrator replace you, so it's not, you're not changing the agreement we had at the beginning, this is just, you know, something down a little bit, you don't think it's still be.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do we have a second? Do we go? We don't have any votes, okay, just acknowledge it, okay. You want to do March Africa Drainage, or you want the other thing? Let's do the other thing, let's do the Holy Cross.
All right.
All right. Public hearing notice, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, the Board of Selectmen of Town of West Wilson will hold a public hearing and application of the College of the Holy Cross contemplation center for 1,000 Goodale Street for a license to store, to allow the storage of 3,000 gallons of liquid propane in underground tank for heating and cooking for the building. The hearing will be held Wednesday, November 4th, 2015, 7:05 p.m. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 140 West Street, West Wilson. All interested parties and groups, right into it then. Come on forward. How are you?
Good, I'm John Lopomaro from Holy Cross. I want those more paperwork, send out the letters, see my contact.
Okay.
Is there any questions I can ask?
Thank you, Mr. Nancy. I just have a question on here, I guess I would ask the, I mean, it looks pretty official, I guess I just asked the fire chief if he has any issues.
No, I do not.
You feel this is a good thing and it's not anything out of the world, I mean.
I have the authority to give them a permit, which I have already issued them for the 2,001 gallons, but anything over that, they need a license to store, so they have to go before the town and have an open hearing for that extra. So he has a permit right now that he can store 2,001. I went up and inspected the tanks today, they're on site, they're doing a great job, they, I had a couple concerns and they've addressed them, and now it's just a formality of going to the public hearing and getting for the extra storage, which he has told me is they'll never have a total of 3,000 on site.
Chief, what is the question? Did the tanks tie down somehow?
No, they don't have a, they're gonna be buried, there is no issue of water table being elevated to draw them out of the ground, so I was not requiring that.
I have a question. Was it originally going to be the 3,000 tanks or maybe, or did something change? I'm just wondering why.
Well, what actually happened was, when we're in the design, the engineer had thought a 2,000 gallon capacity was fine. So one of the things we asked is to ask whoever supplies this stuff, so the supplier came back and says you're better off with 3,000, because the tanks will only be filled to 80% because you're gonna change the liquid to the gas. So we thought about it, we could have lived with 2,000, but that's, that would mean we'd have to have more trucks there, so we figured the less amount of trucks, the better we are.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Kevin Hart, I have bought the property 350 Goodale, just wondering where on site that's gonna be?
It's in math.
It's in math.
So we go up the driveway?
No, let's just do this way, it's easier. So here's the whole plan, right, and we're putting a small parking lot, so it's right there, off the park.
Okay, oh, so it's behind?
It's behind everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Away from Goodale.
Right, it's like, you're gonna go up, I don't know the exact.
This is the driveway right here, right?
That's the entrance, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So we, do I have to buy a, for the resident, for the professional? I know Kevin and I did it by himself, but the women did not.
May I buy a 324 Goodale?
Thank you.
So that's a five, that's a pretty far distance from.
Yes, 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 it's in the woods, well, I know the total length of the driveway is approximately 1,500 feet, so looking at this, it could be about, I, well, the scale is there, so I don't have a scale with me, I'm sorry, but I'll do it like this. It looks to be about 1,200 feet or so, you know, from the driveway entrance.
Do you know the comments? The public, motion to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Please, by the way.
We're good.
Can we save some money?
Pardon?
Can we save some money?
No, I'm, yeah, we're gonna save you some money on our recommendation, do you want to explain? This is Brian Adams, he's now a representative from NFP.
So one of the things we've done is, your, with respect to your senior plans, they all renew on January 1st, you've got three senior plans, you have a Harvard Pilgrim Medicare Enhance, a Fallon HMO plan, and a Tufts HMO plan. The renewal from Harvard Pilgrim came in at, with an 8.45% increase, so it was a significant increase. So one of the things that we did is we presented to the IEC, the option of carving out prescription drug coverage through Harvard Pilgrim and replacing it with a Medicare Part D plan. By doing that, we were able to reduce the rate rather substantially, about 30% delta, the rate actually went down. So on the medical plan, nothing changes. On the prescription drug plan, again, it's not gonna be through Harvard Pilgrim, it will be through Aetna, it is a Medicare Part D plan. It's a four-tier plan as opposed to a three-tier plan, but the copayments are designed to mirror that of the existing plan, with one exception on the 90-day, the tier three copayments are actually a little bit lower, so it's an advantage to the retiree as well, in that regards. Changing the Aetna PDP plan saved the town roughly 108,000 annually, on the same side, it's gonna save the retirees about 72,000 on the Medicare Enhance plan. The Fallon plan also saw a rate decrease as well, we're making a slight modification to that plan, the prescription drug copayments are changing slightly, emergency room copayments are going up, office, primary care physicians are going up by a factor of five, specialists are going up by a factor of five. That renewal actually is a decrease from current rates as well. The Tufts plan, the increase is about 1.8% with no changes. So all in all, what we met with Insurance Advisory Committee, we discussed some, some of the obstacles, some of the objections, and we asked for a vote of the IEC, and the and the Tufts will be 200,000, the town share, 208,000, 90,000 for the Fallon, then 120 for IEC voted unanimously to present to the board with the option of the Harvard Pilgrim with Aetna and the change in the Fallon HMO Medicare plan. the Tufts plan.
I'd say between the Fallon plan and the Harvard plan, probably about 130,000 altogether
Anything wanted to add?
No.
So what's the total said, 108,000?
That's, that's just the Harvard Pilgrim.
would be a safe estimate, so that's the combination, Kevin, cost avoidance and reduction in
Right.
Yeah, we should.
cost.
This is just the seniors, right?
Correct.
Sure, yeah, as, remember that your health plans have two anniversaries, January 1st for all of our retirees over 65, and then July 1st.
So we'll hear about the other ones in July.
Can't wait, can you?
Yeah.
Can you tell us how many people we're talking about and what breakdown, are we mostly into Harvard or are we mostly into Fallon?
Harvard has the most, Harvard has 65, Fallon has 39 retirees, and Tufts has 62.
So we're talking 426,000?
No, 130,000.
That's all, 426,000 total, that's what we're paying, gonna be paying, that's what you gave me for figures? He said 208, 90, and 128?
Mm-hmm.
Is that after the savings?
Correct.
Yes.
And that assumes a static population too.
Correct, that assumes no membership migration.
Yeah, I think we would recommend that the budget may possibly reflect some unit growth, future retirees and things of that nature.
That should be fairly easy to ascertain based on, you know, employment data.
Right.
Exactly.
So the follow-up, do we have an idea how many, are we adding anybody in this to calendar year? No, these are, okay.
And the people could retire almost anytime they want.
Right, they could, yeah, whenever they retire, they, they'll switch to, when they turn 65.
They switch, right.
Because you could retire before you're 65, stay on the Harvard Pilgrim, the regular one, when you're 65, then you have to change.
Okay.
I can't wait.
We still have to offer all three of those, correct?
We.
Per your recommendations?
Yeah, per our recommendation, yeah, we do it for, for people, for, according to their doctors.
Oh, okay, all right, I was just curious, why the three?
So the town is obligated to offer at least one, which is the Enhance program.
Right.
According to Mass General Law, the town has creatively added other lower-cost options to give retirees a number of plan selections to stay.
All right, thank you.
So the 130,000 would probably be a savings of around 90,000 to the members, if 180, 72,000, roughly, you know, 80, 90,000.
Can you email us that, those figures, that presentation?
We absolutely have.
Sure.
Oh, no, no, I just said I can't wait to be. Someone that buys their own health insurance.
That's the second time you said it.
Yes, I haven't, you know, it's a big job in my health.
Mr. Chairman, so arcing back to Mr. Crowley's question or comment earlier, that on a budgetary basis for fiscal '17, maybe with this component, you know, of your, of your budget, or, you know, this small piece, you might want to go close to, you know, close to level funding or, you know, shave a little bit, shave a little bit off, I don't think you want to pare back, you know, the full 130,000 dollars or so on that, on that contribution, so that'll allow for growth and sudden things and.
And what's the, what's the average, if there's a $130,000 savings, what does the average person cost us? How many would have to retire for us to use up the 130,000?
That's a good question.
The cost for, the most expensive plan, which is the Enhance, is about 3,600 dollars a year to the town, so it'd be quite some time before you get through the savings. Do you use some of the savings?
Yeah.
I know in the past, when, when Mr. Gamal was here, he would like take that number, 130, maybe shave off a quarter of it and leave the rest there because, I don't know who's retiring, and then if he had the excess money, we would do other things with it.
Year-end transfers.
Yeah, things like that, but just to be sure we didn't run short and have to.
Right.
Run around and have a special town meeting so we could.
Yeah, I understand that's your favorite year-end spot for, you know, transferring into deficit.
He would do that a lot.
Yeah, so you'll want that flexibility too.
Right, the 3,600 is a worst-case scenario, that's if they all take that top plan, yeah, so that, yeah, I think, the other third, something like that.
Any other questions? Need a vote?
Is this an actual item that is a vote required?
Need a motion?
So moved, do we accept this plan?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Steven Tribandis, Mint Green Planet, Plants, request for license to collect all the second hand items, and request for donation bin license for Steve's Pizza, 341 West Paulson Street, and Ernie's Cowwash, 114 West Paulson Street. How you doing?
Aye. Thanks. I guess I'm just here to answer questions, I didn't, I don't know if you need.
We just started this new program, so we're asking everybody if we can get a license, two licenses for all the, every box they have.
Okay.
We had a lot of trouble with people leaving stuff around, and they weren't picking up their trash and stuff like that, and it was an eyesore for the town, so we asked everybody if we can get a license.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, I know the bins can be an eyesore, obviously, and, but we try to do better than any other company as far as any kind of cleanup, I mean, we're based out of Worcester, and we put our phone, a lot of people have their phone number on the box, where you call us, and we pick up the phone, you know, when you, when you call, and obviously if there was any problem, any trash, you know, we could be there same day. I didn't even know that we had one at Ernie's, I think it was another company that had it at Ernie's, but maybe we have something in the works that I don't know about, we do have one at Steve's Pizza, but.
Is that what the application said, yes?
Maybe, I guess we do have one, maybe it's something, it's, it might not be there yet, but it's on its, in the work, or something like that.
So this is something we're gonna request every year to get a license, renew the license, just like a regular license in town, so we can keep up, and we know who's doing it and who's gonna be responsible for it.
I think it's good, I mean, I think there was a, across from Steve's is a hot dog stand, and I think there's some people that just drop their bins off there without any permission.
They're gone, thankfully they're gone now.
Yeah, I mean, we try to, I don't know, we try to do more than most companies, you know, I mean, we, I like to say we're the best in the business, but, I mean, some companies give the whole business a bad name, you know.
Can I ask how often you come to MD?
Once a week, I mean, we were at Walmart, and we had permission from Walmart, but as part of the application, they wanted permission from the property management company, and they ended up going with Big Hearted Books, but a place like Walmart, because there was so much trash there, we were there every day, and I thought we did a good job there, but the property management company ended up going with Walmart, but, so that's just how that works, but.
Okay.
So we'd be there once a week, and like I said, we're in Worcester, so anytime like, we haven't really had a lot of trash at Steve's Pizza, it's really been pretty good, and, I mean, if there's any, sometimes places get really bad and we just have to pull a bin because there's so much trash there, but.
Okay.
It's, some places like Steve's Pizza, there's never any trash, you know, very rarely.
Mr. Chairman, now, the last gentleman that was here, we, didn't we kind of make that the starting point, and everybody go past him?
We're gonna ask you to, if you could just move them towards the back a little bit.
We did, we are the furthest one on the, on the, because I know you have the town sign, the inner, we're the furthest one on the, if you're looking towards Worcester, I guess, from Steve's, we're the furthest on the left, we, me and my son just moved it tonight, so if all the other people have moved it to the, to the left of us, I think it won't be in the view of the sign at all or anything like that.
Yeah, because the, so you're, you're to the left of the.
How many are there?
There's four there now, one is a book bin, one is Planet Aid, and the other company is Earth Aid.
Which one was the answer?
Answer, they come.
That'd be the one, which one are you right next to? What's the one right to your right?
The yellow one.
That's Planet Aid, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so Planet.
Now there's a big, there's, we moved ours to the left of Planet Aid, and now there's a hole there, but obviously if everybody moves us to the, to the left of us, I think it would be out of the view of the sign.
This is.
We have, Planet Aid came in earlier, they still have to come back with the high school and Duncan Gillies, and then we have Earth Aid, right, because you're in mint green, okay, Earth Aid.
Is he on tonight? Is on tonight?
He was supposed to be on tonight, he came in today, he brought the wrong forms, he brought forms for the city of Worcester, he had them in his hand, and I gave him the forms again, and he's gonna come back in two weeks.
Okay.
And Planet Aid's coming back in two weeks as well, so two weeks we should get all these done, but in the meantime, we discovered two more bins that were new to town, one's at the Bethlehem Baptist Church and one's at the B&amp;P Gas Station, but we've sent out information and hopefully we'll get those back in the next week as well. Did we not limit it though to three? We limited it to three, so there's four down there, so that has to be dealt with. There's a book bin that we have known, we're trying to find out who the book bin belongs to, so we have Planet Aid, Earth Aid in green, mint green.
Mint green.
Of three, we now have to identify, spoke to Steve today, he has no idea who belongs to the other bin.
Okay.
So it just appeared. It just appeared? When I was on the phone.
I'm amazed, too, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Planet Aid was, yeah, Planet Aid was the other one. So is the, I misunderstood, so Planet Aid's been approved there, he's going to be approved there, is the third one approved?
No, Earth Aid.
Earth Aid.
That's the other one for Steve's, okay.
Yes.
Because Planet Aid was here last week or the week before.
He was here two weeks ago, correct?
They said they were the best in the business. No, I appreciate, I appreciate, I think both of you guys are probably, unlike the ones that aren't even.
There's people that are really unscrupulous, that, you know, they just throw bins where there's no permission or anything like that, it's just, it's a, it gives the whole business a bad name.
Any other discussion on this? Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ernie's you don't know about yet, you don't know where it's going, you don't even know.
I don't know, I thought it was a, it's as if it's the Ernie's across from Walmart, I thought it was a, Earth Aid bin there, but maybe we have one there too, it's not.
I thought it was a yellow one.
I thought it was the other, yellow is the, is Planet Aid.
Well, you're not licensed to put one.
We have, actually did an application for a bin there from Mint Green Planet.
Are you the one doing the application, or does somebody else do?
Well, Lisa's the, pretty much the manager in the office, I kind of do like business development and.
Okay.
But, I mean, if that's the case, then it's just those two that we have.
So if you can just follow up maybe with me, if, let's say it's not you guys, just let us know.
The documentation in the package doesn't say anything about, it says Steve's Pizza's gonna be the only one.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
And it doesn't say anything about Ernie's.
Yeah, I thought it was Earth Aid, was that Ernie's?
I think it's Earth Aid.
Okay.
So we'll approve.
We'll approve you for Steve's Pizza.
Thank you very much, and like I say, I mean, we're in Worcester, you can all call us anytime.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Earth Aid, we're gonna put off till two weeks, correct?
This is so.
Is Big Hearted here?
Can I, can I make a comment about this bin thing?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think we waste more time doing bins than we, I think we should require every bin guy that has a bin in this town to come in to a meeting on this day, if you don't come, then get your bin out of our town. If there's nobody here for a bin that's somewhere, then we call whoever's on that bin and have it taken away, or take it away and bring it down behind the town barn, I don't care, this is, we spend, this guy, well, I don't have one at Ernie's, but maybe I have one at Ernie's, I don't know.
We just did this the first.
And then the Planet Aid guy, he goes, I can't get the school to sign, can't get the school to sign, superintendent's there every day, the business manager's there every day, can't find somebody to sign this stupid paper, that guy, he's been running around, and I thought he already came back with Duncan Gillies all signed and sealed, I thought somebody did, for Duncan Gillies a couple weeks ago, and I can't keep track, is it the white one, the green one, the blue one, or the red one, or the yellow one, or the other?
Trust me, it's very difficult.
I mean, I think we're wasting more time, I'm wasting more time now talking about it, I know, I'm sorry.
All right.
It drives me nuts.
All I can say is don't forget this is a new policy, and people are gonna have to come in and get their license in December, so if they don't come in, they're not gonna get a license.
But what I'm saying.
Then we'll get rid of them.
What I'm saying, we get rid, but.
So Earth Aid, we're gonna put off till two weeks, correct?
This is so.
Is Big Hatted here? No.
Can I, can I make a comment about this bin thing?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think we waste more time doing bins than we, I think we should require every bin guy that has a bin in this town to come in to a meeting on this day. If you don't come, then get your bin out of our town. If there's nobody here for a bin that's somewhere, then we call whoever's on that bin and have it taken away. Or take it away and bring it down behind the town barn. I don't care. This is, we spend, this guy, well, I don't have one at Ernie's, but maybe I have one at Ernie's. I don't know. And then the Planet Aid guy, he goes, I can't get the school to sign. Can't get the school to sign. Superintendent's there every day. The business manager's there every day. Can't find somebody to sign the stupid paper. That guy, he's been running around. And I thought he already came back with Duncan Gillies all signed and sealed. I thought somebody did for Duncan Gillies a couple of weeks ago and I can't keep track. Is it the white one, the green one, the blue one, or the red one, or the yellow one, or the?
Trust me, it's very.
I mean, I think we're wasting more time. I'm wasting more time now talking about it. I know, I'm sorry.
All right.
It drives me nuts.
All I can say is don't forget this is a new policy and people are gonna have to come in and get their license in December, so if they don't come in, they're not gonna get a license.
But what I'm saying.
Then we'll get rid of them.
What I'm saying, we get rid, but we get guys running around here. We don't know who is who. We don't know. Now, I don't run around and look at every parking lot to see whose bin is there. Christ, I got enough other stuff to worry about.
Well, we cleaned up, we cleaned up a couple of places that helped the town look a little better, so we're moving in the right direction. All right, so we're gonna do, so Big Hatted, were they supposed to come in here?
They're supposed to be coming.
Okay, we'll wait till eight o'clock. Let's do Mike Kittredge. You got time? Come on up, Mike. You've got plenty of time for us.
So Earth Aid's not coming, right?
Earth Aid is not coming in.
Big Hatted's supposed to be there.
As it is on the agenda at seven fifty.
Yeah, right. All right, so Mike has some news for us.
Yes, I'm here with Dave Batista from Lenard Engineering to update you on Malden and Crescent Street project.
What packages should be?
Yeah, let me do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is David Batista. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Lenard Engineering. And we're pleased to report that we're now finished with the design and contract documents, bidding documents for Malden Street, Crescent Street project. We prepared an estimate for you that we've submitted. When we first started this project, the pavement management plan called for reclamation on what I call Malden East. It's the, from Good Dale to Crescent Street and reclamation on Crescent Street from Malden to Pine Arden. And then just an overlay on the westerly end of Malden Street. I looked at the pavement and felt that it was in highly deteriorated condition and that, like, you know, we volunteered to do testing all the way to the end of the Malden Street just to see what we had to work with, et cetera. So the third estimate in the pile that you have is for reclamation and full paving of Malden Street from Crescent to the west end. I don't know how all this fits in with the money that you've got allocated, but the two pieces that were scheduled for reclamation and paving total about three hundred and sixty thousand and if you wanted to reclaim and pave the westerly end of Malden Street, it'd be another four hundred thousand dollars. I've been talking to Mike about trying to go into a project like this at this time of year. It would be my recommendation to defer bidding until February so that you could take advantage of the more aggressive pricing, get a better price and avoid having a project of this magnitude started in, working in December.
And I do agree with that too. We talked about it and we feel we can get a much more competitive bid when everybody's trying to fill their calendar for the year in February, so. With that being said, we still have a secondary plan to overlay because you guys signed my goods and services bids to overlay the upper part of Malden Street. We'll take that as a phase one, get that overlaid down to the river. And so when this other part takes over in the spring, we can complete the whole thing. And I think we can save a lot of money by holding off and get competitive bids. Instead of someone coming out and said, "I'll throw a bid out there, what the heck, you know, we'll try to get in at the end of the year," it'll be much more competitive in the spring.
Do you have the seven hundred and sixty thousand to do this part?
Have a word with us all?
So this will be all of our?
No, no. It's three hundred and sixty for the, for the Malden Crescent Street.
So the three ninety-nine went up?
No, what I did was when you guys okayed the bids in, I think it was the twenty-first of October, I had asphalt in place. And so I proceeded just at a contingency plan in case for some reason this wouldn't be done or whatever it is. And I secured all the chapter ninety signatures and we secured all the documentation to get started. And it possibly could start next week, but it might be the week after. And I've been working with Nancy and Jim and we put everything together to try to push the overlay through. So we get that done this year at least, so.
But you're telling us that that's.
Right.
That wasn't a, it's not a, not the best.
No, he's, he's saying it has to be, by the time you go out to the bid process and go through the central register and secure all the bids and get everything moved, it'll be December. I've, you, you guys already gave me the tools by doing all the bids for me. I have it in place already, the numbers, and I've already talked to the contractor. So I don't have to go through that whole process.
I think we're talking about two different projects.
It's two phases. We gotta look at this in two separate phases.
The overlay project is.
Is upper Malden.
Is up in Malden Street. And that came in at eighty-eight thousand, four hundred.
Eighty thousand, eighty.
Okay, so I'm talking about what's here.
That's, that's a full depth reclamation of that road. We're going with an overlay.
Two different projects completely.
Right.
The full depth reclamation.
All the way to the top.
All the way to the top where there's a gate at the end.
Yeah.
Full depth reclamation will get you a twenty-year life cycle, lifespan out of that road without major rehabilitation. An overlay might buy you half of that or less, depends on, on the weather. You have a relatively thin pavement and base material up there. And it's fairly well deteriorated now.
Does this overlay correspond to one of these three?
The third, well, the third page.
The three ninety-nine goes away?
It's a competitor to the third page, yes.
Three ninety-nine goes away and gets replaced with the eighty.
Yes.
And you're, what's your recommendation as to what we should do with that road? A second ago, you said you didn't think an overlay was the right way to go.
You can't compare the two and, and say, oh, one's eighty-eight thousand dollars and one's four hundred.
Understand.
Let's do the eighty-eight.
No, no, no.
You're gonna get twenty years out of the four hundred thousand. You'll get seven, ten years out of the overlay if you're lucky. It's gonna start cracking prematurely because the road is fractured underneath.
And we can do some chip sealing and things like that, excuse me, to lengthen that period a little bit. If we don't just let it go, if at the seven years comes up and we do a chip seal to it, then you can extend that a little bit too. There's things we can do to make that number increase a little bit, so.
How many, I don't know if you know, how many years has it been paved the way it is paved on the upper part?
I really don't know, yeah.
Years and years and years and years.
Yeah, we've only shimmed it in a couple of places since I've been here twenty years.
I mean, since, probably I was a kid of this.
Yeah.
When I was oiled then, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying, that the full reclamation, but we're reclaiming a road that gets, how many people live up there? I mean, to spend four hundred thousand dollars for thirty cars a day is kind of like nuts, I think. You're gonna spend four hundred thousand, we barely spent four hundred thousand dollars fixing Temple Street from the railroad tracks down to here. And that gets a forty thousand cars a, a week and you're gonna get a hundred and twenty up there. So to me, it's overlay is the, well, I just oil it and sand it, but that doesn't work.
I wish we still could.
Here we go again.
Mr. McCormick, your logic is, I think, the same logic that was applied in the pavement management study that you have. They called for simply overlaying that section of road.
Well, I didn't even know that. That isn't my, I would, that isn't, I don't want to sound like I really knew what I was talking about.
No, your logic is valid. You have a.
The overlay, I guess we've learned from the sewer system, how long they're gonna last, because now those roads are ten years.
Yeah, but those, that overlay was overlaid over a road that has been, that was dug up, beat up, compacted, excuse my language, half-assed, threw some pavement on top of it and said, go, go. And they gave us an inch, what'd they give us, an inch and a half?
Right.
Overlay over some dirt. This is asphalt in place, very, not maybe very much, but there's something. And underneath that, there's some other stuff.
Right.
The oil in the sand, the old.
Already compacted.
So it's all compacted, so if you overlay that, it's got a lot better base than the part that needs to be reclaimed where they put the sewer in.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent because there's no surge up there anyhow.
No.
So you don't have to worry about anything, the ground moving or anything like that. And it does not get a lot of traffic, so I would definitely go with the overlay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I can't, see, spend that kind of money. And if you can get it done this year, why not? And then it just speeds, if this is an all right time of the year to put it down. I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's why we gotta do it quick.
You're doing it next couple of weeks.
So how about the other two, the Malden, Good Dale to Crescent for two thirty-four? Is that, what is that?
We recommend you hold off on doing anything with that until, say, February. Put it out to bid for an April start.
Is that gonna be an overlay?
That's gonna be reclaim and pave. The giant hammer mill will come in and rototill the entire road about a foot deep. They'll grade it, compact it. In some places, they're gonna have to take some of that material out so that they don't raise the road too much, so it watersheds into driveways that kind of go downhill. And then they'll put four inches of hot mixed asphalt on top of that.
Yeah.
And that mix, that blend of four inches of hot mixed asphalt, eight to twelve inches of reclaimed material on top of the subgrade, the natural ground that you have there, gets you a twenty-year lifespan out of the road.
See, the water part, walls, she gets all the traffic from the school. The top part doesn't get the traffic at all.
Yeah, just gets the people that live there, right? Yeah.
So you're, the two, the quotes that you have here, this is just your estimate of what you think the bids are gonna come in at? Is this, you're saying you estimate the bids will come in if we wait till February? These numbers are.
Yeah.
Not that they're invalid, but we're gonna be.
I think you're gonna do better than these prices. And I say that because I used, I relied heavily on weighted unit prices reported by the Mass DOT. And their projects typically have higher unit prices than we see contractors bidding on town projects like yours. For example, I've got a pavement, hot mixed asphalt, in my estimates at a hundred and ten dollars a ton, which is, you know, DOT had reams of evidence that that's the market value. Mike's got a price of seventy-two dollars a ton.
Right.
In place here in West Paulson. So there are, there's conservatism laced in my estimates by design. It's a lot easier to work backwards than the other way around. I don't wanna have to come back here in February and say, I'm sorry, but we didn't have enough money. So I think my estimates are conservative and I think there's probably a ten or twenty percent premium that you would pay right now if you tried to put this out to bid. If you wait till spring, you'll get more bidders and you'll have a better project. You'll have better weather to build the road in.
Now, on this, on this project, does the water department want to do anything before? Is there any, do they know we're doing this stuff? Is there anything they want to do before we do it and then they say?
Well, five years, they're gonna have to wait. They're gonna have to wait five years for the moratorium, but.
Well, that's not true because they did it, they, after the sewer, we had that same regulation.
Right. This job's been in the process.
They put water pipes in on Henry Street a year after it was.
Yeah, but this project's been in play for what, three or four years?
Well, you can always ask them between now and February.
Just ask them.
Right, I'm asking.
Oh, for the other loop, oh, yes.
All of these, as long as they know in case there's something they can do, because I know when they dug up Henry Street, I think, a year later, after it was done.
Right.
They dug it up again and put a water pipe in.
Right.
So.
Well, we've touched base with them because we have to raise a couple of the structures and that's what we'll be doing. We're gonna be doing, the guys are gonna be doing some of the work up there. There's a couple of places where they wanted to reclaim, but we're gonna dig it up and overlay it ourselves at just a couple of thirty-foot stretches. And we did some upgrades in the catch basins and a couple of other little runoffs we had to fix. We got a few things to tweak before they overlay it, but we're gonna be starting that, some of it tomorrow and the rest next week, so. And we're gonna do all the sweeping that saves a lot of the money and all the hay bales and all that stuff we're gonna be putting in just to kind of save some of the numbers too. So they're gonna come in and we just strictly bid the overlay. So they're gonna come in and just pound it out in a day and get it done and we'll do all the rest.
Mr. Chairman, if we put this out to bid, let's say, February, is it normally they get a couple of weeks or a month to get back to us, right? From what I'm kind of remembering from other things? So depending on the weather, would be, I'm assuming we would hopefully be first on these people's list to get this done in spring? Or is it better to go January so we get it out sooner? I'm, I want, we all want this done quickly because we've been trying to get this done for a while.
You could put it out to bid in January.
Okay.
You'll likely have to, regardless of when you put it out, there'll be some type of asphalt adjustment clause built into the contract in case oil prices go wild.
Yeah.
Between the time of bid and the time of construction. But, yeah, you can put it out to bid in January. April first is probably, it's a traditional start date for the construction season.
Okay.
Around here. Anything before that is potluck. Sometimes you have a nice warm march and contractors will get started. Other times, you still have snow on the ground and frost.
To me, I'd rather have it done when we know the weather's just right.
Right, just gonna stay.
So we get it done right the first time and we're not working around frost or something like that.
How long would something like this take to get completed from beginning to end?
It's actually gonna take several weeks. There's a period of time when the water department, gas department would have to come and either lower their structures or somehow protect them so that the reclamer can go through. That's gonna take a while.
Okay.
Then the reclaiming process goes fairly quickly. Within a day or two, the whole thing will be rototilled, as I call it. Then there'll be some shaping and compacting of the material. Then utilities will have to come back in and raise all of their gate valves. You've probably driven down streets where the valve boxes and the manholes are sticking up this far and they're painted so you can see them. That whole process takes time. And then the paving will go quickly. So I would say three weeks, two weeks, something like that.
Okay, just so I have some kind of idea. Thank you.
It's, it's a, quite a disruption to the neighborhood. There can be dust. And I've got provisions for dust control in the contract, so.
I mean, I'm in favor of doing, I guess, the overlay now. But is there anything that we need to do to this loop to make it better for the winter? I mean.
We're gonna have to do some.
Can you grind, grade a little bit here and there and fill it in or some, I don't know, because last winter we had people saying that there was ruts and because it had all heaved.
It just keeps popping. Hopefully, our hop out box will be here by then. I haven't got a arrival time so we can actually fix it with hot mix this time because the coal patch used to just blow out of that road.
Yeah.
We'd put it down, two days later, we'd go back on a Monday and it'd be in so much front yard.
Yeah, okay, just.
Yeah, well, we plan on shimming that a couple of places too.
As much as we can, right?
Yeah, there's not, the whole road's dilapidated. And that's the beauty of it. When they reshape the road, we're gonna have a nice even layer of compaction too, so it's gonna go up and down at an even level. So unlike with the sewers, it goes up and down on different levels.
They didn't care. They just slapped it down as fast as they could, yeah.
Jim, just a, a couple of things. The, the traditional, April first, a traditional starter, a, a date of, after the construction season. It's no coincidence that April first is the, is the statutory deadline for the state to announce what municipalities' chapter ninety allocations are gonna be for the, for the coming year. That's just a, you know, bit of useless information perhaps, but where are we in the bid documents right now?
They're essentially, I'll call them ninety-eight percent complete. I have to fill in the dates.
Okay.
And the quantities.
Just a point of information, the bid documents to the very day, I'm glad to hear that because, you know, the deadline for, for delivery of the bid documents, according to the terms of the contract, we've been following, you know, each stage here, is today, so.
Perfect timing. At least we've done the best we could up to this point.
Good job.
Do we need a motion to do this overlay?
Yes.
Some more questions?
Is that one more question?
This overlay, this is based on, this is not an estimate. This is the actual cost to do this, correct?
This is going off the tonnage. I built in about ten percent. I went off, T.J. Keating and I, we walked around about two weeks ago when I was getting a little concerned and we kind of measured the road out. We did all that stuff and he came back with some numbers. I came back with some numbers. We added ten percent to it. So we, and all likelihood, we might have a little less.
And how do you validate that in the field? Do you validate that?
Take tickets from each truck that arrives on the job, gives you a ticket that says how many tons are on that truck.
Right. We have to be there. I have to be there.
I know that, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay.
You basically collect the tickets as they're going back and forth, right, Mike?
Right.
So that'll be the actual.
Right.
What are you doing that week? What are you doing this? Wait a minute, Hadley lives on that street.
Hey, we'll get Hadley. You can park in his driveway, Mike.
All right. Motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any other discussion?
This is for the eighty-eight fourth.
Yes, this is eighty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need one to go up for bid?
No, you can just put it out to bid and bring it back to us, right?
We don't have to bid.
Tell us when.
For the next one.
Here's our bid.
Oh, for the next one.
For the next set.
I think Mike did a great job on this. He also did a, on West Street that, where the dump truck went over there?
Yeah.
He came up with a solution for that.
Yeah, I wasn't able to do that this week.
I know.
Yeah, because I gotta be there with.
Why don't you tell them what you, what you plan on doing?
Um, I went before the Conservation Commission Monday and, because it's been bugging me, that, that place has been bugging me for a while. I mean, when we painted it for the fourth time, it was, we went down and looked at it. We took some pictures. We cleared away all the brush and everything that was there and all the poison ivy. And we found that up above, they'd used granite to hold back the bank and it was just simple granite they must have taken from somewhere else. So we said, you know what, why don't we put twenty pieces of granite back in, backfill it, you know, get the guardrail put back in. And so I got a, one guardrail company already came out to give us an estimate. What they're gonna do is put eight-foot posts in instead of the, whatever, they were five-foot at the time. So they go deep. And then we'll backfill up to them and they're gonna get a couple more estimates. And then as soon as this gets done, or if this doesn't get done next week or whatever, if we have time in between, I'm gonna go with the guys. We're gonna lay the granite. Because we're not changing everything. We're just repairing an existing wall. We're not upgrading. We're not doing anything. We're just bringing it back to the way it was. And we have all the granite in place because we've taken it from the state jobs that they've had left over. We just stockpiled it out back. So, I mean, the guardrail's gonna cost us the most and a little bit of stone and.
So, I mean, the guardrail's gonna cost us the most and a little bit of stone and, but that's about it. We're gonna give it a shot, trying to straighten that out.
This is a great solution for the problem, we, you know, that we lost, we lost the bond, so the state refused to pay for it.
Oh, isn't it in that bond bill?
No, they, they shut it down.
No, I think the bond bill's still...
No, we lost it.
Which bond bill? It's not a chapter ninety authorization, it had to be a separate, uh...
They're open for five years, is what the, what Jim O'Day tells us, they're available. They just haven't funded it this round.
They refused to fund it, I'm sorry.
This round, right.
They refused to fund it.
So, we could still be funded, but...
Yeah.
We won't need to be.
Five years and you'll have to, you'll have to cut the...
State budget is improving now, so, you know, don't give up hope.
I just think it's, uh, Mike did a great, a great job on this and appreciate that.
It looks good now. At, at first, I drove by, it looks, it looks very good, but it'll look even better if those things are gone.
Right, right. Do you have anything for snowplow jobs?
Um, no, I don't have any more to bring to you.
Okay.
They're coming in slow, I might have to re-advertise, but we have a few.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thanks.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Oh, do you need me for something else with the Marshawk Way?
Marshawk Way, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, just stay right there once a, um, so I take a big hearted books not coming in.
No.
Seven fifty, so it's not seven fifty, so we'll put them, uh, as Kevin said, we'll waste more time with them.
Yeah, let's waste a little more time.
All right, and then, uh, let's do, uh, Marshawk Way drainage issue, Pat?
Um, well, Mr. Coffin is here, he's the one who had the issues, I think.
Okay.
We should have him come up with this.
Hey, thank you.
Pat, uh, first when I talked with Pat, I called him because I wanted to commend Mike for the work he's done since he first came on. And, uh, I can't say enough of good things about him and his staff, other than they like coffee and they really eat Dunkin' Donuts pretty good. But really, when I called him after the previous DPW director left and just asked if he could, uh, give me a few minutes if he's at a house, uh, he talked with me, he said couldn't do anything for two or three weeks. Two or three weeks went by and Mike was there. And he put some soil down to help prevent some of the, um, the water that's cascading onto my property, because, uh, the street is sinking so bad now that, um, the, the flow of water is not going the way it should be. It's, uh, between me and your friend, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, he's just as upset about what's going on in Marshawk Way. And I understand there's only a half a dozen houses on the street and I understand the, the cost. And I understand that we've tried to, uh, go after the state. God knows, I tried many phone calls as well, uh, to do no avail. But the street is not getting any better, it's getting worse. And after talking with Pat, uh, we both agreed that, uh, putting this off is gonna get more costly as time goes on. And what could we do to, uh, to say, "Okay, we understand that the people that have put this in..." In fact, I talked to the neighbor down the street that's lived here all this time and he said, and I was surprised, he said, "They only put in a, a two-inch PCV, uh, piping and they, they put it all together with glue." He says, "That's how, how little they cared." And they left all the original piping on his property. So, obviously, the ones who installed it, uh, didn't care about quality. And it's not helping me or my neighbors out, because especially in the front of my area, what, what, once was maybe an inch long by a half inch wide, is probably now three and a half, four feet and it's about four inches deep. Uh, even Mike, uh, staff put some, uh, pavement on it to, so you wouldn't, uh, fill up with as much water. But it's the connecting pipe coming from my house sewer to the, uh, one that's on the road. That area is really sinking a lot. It's also doing the same thing over at Mr. Sullivan's house. Uh, in fact, I think, uh, some of what we did to help me, it may now be causing him to get more water, because it's slowing it down from coming onto my property and going onto his. And again, the sinking of the, uh, of that area, uh, obviously is not gonna go away. It's, I've lived there for five years and I've sat in front of yous for five years, talking to you about it, and, um, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change. I shared the information I had with the previous, uh, town administrator and DPW director, told him when I had, had an engineer, uh, check it and, and explained to him. Uh, the Anthony had made me a lot of promises, put some trees in, do all this, and he did nothing. And, uh, like I said, I talked with Mike, he, he understood what I was, uh, asking for and he was very supportive and I truly do appreciate, uh, his sincerity in wanting to do a good job. I know that the town is talking about hiring another DPW director and you need an engineering license, but I gotta be honest with you, as a town person, this man's lived here the, his entire life, he knows the town better than anyone that can come in for two years. And he, he doesn't know this, but I'm doing this on my own, that, uh, he knows this town better than anyone else that I've met, especially with the DPW. And I hope that you'll consider maybe, if possible, I know there's been talk about maybe finding a way to waive the engineering requirement so that this gentleman would have the opportunity, because I would, I would recommend him highly for what the work he's done for me. So, that's where I stand as far as Marshawk Way. I went and I put flyers on everybody's, uh, homes, uh, over the last two days, letting them know we're gonna talk about it. And unfortunately, I'm disappointed, but, uh, Mr. Sullivan has a birthday party tonight, but, uh, no one else has, uh, come to, uh, to, to support what we're trying to do, at least what I'm trying to do. I know the houses on Newton Street and the houses that were sold on Marshawk Way take two years to sell. I know that they're over four hundred and fifty thousand for each of them and I'm not sure if the roads, I was a real estate broker for ten years. It wouldn't be anything positive to drive someone up there on a road that's like a roller coaster and, uh, with a bunch of puddles that are now performing there. And I know that I had my house quoted and, uh, if I was a seller today, I'd lose between fifty and seventy thousand dollars selling my house. For what, for, for whatever reasons. But part of the reasons was the house had been sold for so long in Newt, on Newton Street and the one across the street from me took almost two years as well. And because of that, uh, and my concerns obviously are my investment. My life investment is in that property and I'm concerned about where my, uh, life investment's going at this point. I've asked yous in the past to, to look at the road and see what you could do about it. I think everyone, even Mr. McCormick talked about it earlier, you know, that they did a poor job putting it in, uh, the sewer system. And, and, and it's great that we know it and unfortunately, we didn't win with the state, but it doesn't make it go away. And I'm trying to just plead one last time for you to look at this and reconsider on doing something for Marshawk Way.
Thank you, Mr. Coffin. Mike, do you have any suggestions?
Um, the only thing I can tell you, uh, we put some drainage in at the end of the road a couple of years back. What we found is the road was actually, um, built on clay. And what they did is they put a membrane in between the clay and, um, dense grade that they made for the road, which works great, because, again, it's that same thing, the road goes up and down evenly. But when they, uh, when we cut through to get over to the other part, we found that they never replaced the, um, membrane in between. So, it's just was, the, um, the dense grade is just going into the clay. So, I mean, it's gonna settle in there and settle in there, um, you'd probably, you could either keep shimming it and overlaying it or, you know, the, the other way is dig it up and try to put the membrane back in. But it, it really has to be a full piece of membrane to go across the whole road, so, I mean, it's a, it's a problem, it's a real problem.
You said the other part, where does the membrane go from?
The membrane goes across the whole road. And what happened when they put the sewer line down, if they cut the membrane, put the sewer pipe in and then we'll put the membrane back in. So, there's no membrane to stop the other compact, the dense, the dense grade from sinking into the, um, clay. That's what we found at the end, at least that's what we found when we dug up the end of the road, cause we were very surprised.
When I was there with you, I think it was two years ago, when you contacted me, when I walked over, I thought it was, um, more of your property having the problem, but I thought it was looked into and it was said that it wasn't caused by the town property.
Well, actually, you approved, the committee approved seventy-five hundred dollars to, if you remember by Anthony, so he could look to see what's going on underneath the road.
Right.
Uh, nine, ten months later, I contacted Anthony and Anthony said he was too busy and he forgot about it. The last time I contacted him, uh, before he left, uh, he sent me an email saying that the road was my problem. That was the last email I got.
The mem, the membrane is actually a piece of material?
Yes.
Like a, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, like a heavy felt almost with, um, it's like a heavy felt membrane that goes across. They use it for doing swamps and stuff, it's just to keep the other, uh, material from going into the clay or anywhere.
It's like a Winix, Winix over there.
Yeah, okay, all right, I get it, I read that.
That's what created the rut in the road, we're figuring, because where the rut was, where we dug up to put in the drainage at the end of the road, right where the rut was, is where the membrane was missing.
So, Mike, what have you guys got? I heard you say you went back and have done some stuff since you've been contacted.
We had so much stuff going on this year and I hate to use that word again. The only thing I could do is put an earthen berm on the edge, which we've done before. We put some loam, we seed it till we can go back and put a full, um, berm in there, an asphalt berm. So, we put it, so it went far enough, so it pushed it into the catch basin that goes beyond that property, you know? Hopefully, keep it going to the other one, which kinda created another problem around the corner. So, we tried putting a little apron at the end of that guy's driveway and looked at it the last time and we're gonna probably end up putting an apron on his driveway to kinda push the water around the corner a little more. So, um, you know, like this stuff goes, every time you do something, it just kinda puts it somewhere else. But the other property, as far as I know, is going into the other drain before your property.
Yeah, yeah, it's going into the drain, the one at this corner, that's going into the drain.
No, the one before your property, there were, the other, if you're looking at your house to the left, there's a little drain by the tree there.
Yeah, he, they, uh, town put in a little, uh, catch basin for him.
Right.
What a couple of, um, what they call those drainage things and water runs into.
Catch basin?
And another question.
Oh, the grates, okay. Yeah.
This membrane, no, I, I, this is the first time ever hea, I've ever heard about this membrane being cut or being a problem when you dug it up.
Silvio Beruzzi, we brought it forth to him when, when we were dug it up.
We've never heard about it.
Right.
So, so to fix that, we'd have to tear up the entire road, put a whole new membrane down from one end to the other, theoretically.
Theoretically, yeah.
Or else dig up the road and get rid of the clay and put down some other kinda material. I don't know if that would even be, I mean, I don't know, you'd have to have that engineer here to tell us that.
Right.
So, we're looking at a, a sizable cost of money to repair this road. There's how many houses on the road?
Let's see, one, two, three, it's six. It's soon to be seven, because it's on the corner.
Yeah, right, but that's the very beginning of the road. He can sneak out on the Goodell Street there, if he wanted to, right?
Right.
And avoid the membrane problem. So, um...
Well, just to give you another, another...
But we have so, no, but let me, if you, cause you brought my name up as the last time. We have six houses, twelve cars, I'm gonna say, everybody's got two cars, twelve cars a day, drive up and down there twice a day, that's twenty-four cars a day. Let's just say, I don't know how much it would cost to rip up this road, put a new membrane down, repave it, we, you can't put down an inch and a half of pavement, probably gonna put down four or five in, four inches like we're gonna do.
Right.
Four inches is, we're probably looking at well over a quarter of a million dollars.
To do it right, right.
To do it right, to do it from the way it should be done.
The way it was originally, right.
Right. And I argued a minute or two ago that to spend, in your street is probably what? Your, your street is probably what, uh, thousand feet long maybe?
Yeah.
If we're lucky. I argued a few minutes ago for thirty-one hundred feet to not spend money to fix it, because not enough cars drove on it. Um, almost as much money as it would cost to fix your road that has less cars than Malden Street has. So, to me, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying you can't go on a list, you're gonna go on a list, it's, that it already has a hundred other projects listed on it. We have a pile of streets that need to be fixed and repaired and that are more, I'm not picking on your road, but are more heavily used than certainly Marshawk Way is used. Um, you know, and they have ruts in front of their house and you can make the argument like you just did, "Well, the value of their house went down because of the ruts." Well, it could be part of Worcester Street, it could be, there's a lot, again, a lot of streets in this town that need to be repaired. I think even Newton Street is terrible. That's like a dishwasher board going up and down that street. Um, so, it, it, and then that would get a lot more use than Marshawk Way, cause you gotta go up that to get to Marshawk Way. But anyway, I guess that would be my argument. Look, I guess, we gotta just make whatever's the simplest repair is at the least cost and, and just keep going that road. I mean, I cannot see us bringing in an engineering firm to spend and spend, I don't know, forty thousand dollars to engineer that project. And then you go on the list and you're down at, you know, we got twenty-five things on the list and you're twenty-six, because we already got twenty-five other ones ahead of you that we've had. Some things have never been repaired, those have been on the list. I mean, Malden Street, let's take Malden Street as an example, that's been on the list for probably ten years. Not, maybe not ten years, but close, long time.
At least five, yeah.
And we have never fixed, we're finally gonna fix that this year. And it's gonna take a quarter of our chapter ninety money that we have in place, just to fix that road.
Well, it, part of the problem is the improper, um, putting in trench for the sewer. Why couldn't you cut that open and repack it and just put, um, asphalt over the top of that?
Well, how do we?
Rather than doing the whole street.
But how do we?
That's where, if you look at the street, everywhere that it's sinking is where the trench is.
But if Mike says it because it has this clay thing, it's gotta, so that it all kinda rolls together, right? The clay and the membrane holds that all together. But you can't just pack that, because it's still gonna collapse into that. Any water that runs along the road, that gets under the road, it's gonna run to that place, because it runs off of the clay and the rest of the membrane. Am I kinda saying this right? So, no matter how many times we dig up the trench and fill it and do other things, it's gonna collapse again. And it's gonna collapse again and it's gonna collapse again. It'll never go away until we rip up the entire road, I guess, and put a new membrane down or build, or rebuild the whole road. True?
Yeah, it might start going, if you shim it, you know, like I said, you just put a thin coat over the trench
Yeah.
and maybe have to do that, that, that's the only thing I can think of off the top of my head, that's the cheapest scenario and as it goes down, you just add a little more. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but I mean...
Well, they actually had done a spot, they were supposed to do it all, all the way to where the water line comes into my property going down, but they missed it by two feet. They didn't go far enough. But where they had done it, that spot they had done, has stayed, it hasn't moved yet. And as Mike says, around the outside, and you mentioned too, around the outside edge, has moved a little bit, but that area they had done, hasn't moved. But the area that's where my sewer line comes into my property and goes and connects to the street, that area has made it a tremendous, uh, uh, sinking in that particular area. To the point where they tried to put some pavement on it, because it's, it's gonna be a pu, puddle there, it's never gonna go away, cause it's that deep. So, the only way, I, I mean, I'm not looking to say spend a quarter of a million dollars, you know, unless we could get...
This is a guess, trust me.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, well, you know, I, I understand the town and its constraints, but what I'm looking at is try to find something like what he's already done. Cut it up in that area, pack it and put it, put it down. And then every three to five years, if you gotta go in and put a little adhesive on it, so the water doesn't go in between the cracking, uh, that works, because you go on a lot of roads and you see that that's what they do all the time, because they don't want the water to get into the crack. Well, it's happened, it's for fi, four and a half, five years, no one's done anything. So, all that water's just seeping in those cracks and those cracks that were there, maybe an eighth of an inch, since some areas, a half an inch wide now. And all that water's getting in. So, looking at it, as Mike said, in an easier way, that will solve it, because it's not traveled that much, to me, would be a happy medium for the people that live on the road and for the town as well, for spending that kinda money. I already know it worked, because it worked in that area that Mike had done about four years ago.
Yeah.
It hasn't moved, it stayed the same level, the area's around the crack, but that's what they had done, whatever they had done and repacked it, it solved the problem of that sinking going on.
Mike, can you, uh, look at and give us a recommendation for the next meeting? Or you, or do you already know?
Uh, no, I'd have to relook at it.
Okay.
This Malden Street's been, keep it busy.
I'd like you to look at this street, but are there streets in worse shape? That if we start working on this one because of this sewer issue, are there ones that are worse than this that we're saying, "Put it aside"?
Newton Street certainly is worse than that.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't, the pavement management, I don't know if they looked at all this, I don't know how...
Yeah, they, they've looked at all of it, right.
So, I mean, if, if we put all our resources and time into this street, are we letting other streets go that are ha, more highly traveled? And are there other side, there could be other side streets that are in worse shape that we don't know about, uh, or that we're not talking about tonight?
All right.
So, I guess...
There's a whole list, that pavement management study paid for, gives a list of everything and maybe that's something you look at and then kinda charge people.
Go from there, yeah. You kinda prioritize this, correct? I'm assuming.
Well, let's, let's wait till we get the report back and then we'll, uh...
Go from there.
Go from there. That work?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, uh, update on regional dispatch in this... All right. Uh, update on regional dispatch initiative.
Do you want me to give it a speed read for you, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, at the last meeting, a, uh, an update, uh, uh, was requested of the police and fire chiefs on the, um, uh, regionalization of, uh, dispatching operations with, uh, with Holden. Uh, a report from, uh, Chief Minich and Chief Welsh, uh, to the board. I'm forwarding this information to the Board of Selectmen on the progress of the regionalization of the communications center. There are a few points that I would like to address. One, major headway has been made on the connectivity between the Public Safety Headquarters and West Boylston and Holden. A grant was written and funded to purchase fiber optic cable to run from Holden to West Boylston. This fiber will travel various paths throughout the town and will provide the necessary loops for all communications, including telephone, computer, radios, and more. The Holden and West Boylston light departments agreed to have their personnel run the fiber. This has been a huge effort and the cooperation between the various depart- town departments has been great. The fiber can end at our current site and eventually be run to the Sterling Street location once the new police station is constructed, if the vote is approved. Two, antenna sites have been chosen for the best receive transmit capabilities for the radio systems and will hopefully be the Lawrence Street site, the Public Safety Headquarters site, and the Beaman Street Tower site. The Beaman Street Tower site needs to be negotiated with the Water Department, which is the very next item to be completed. Three, there are funds that are currently available in the awarded grant that will pay for certain radio items to be purchased. The complete package of radio quotes has been received. These were designed by Motorola and the funds to pay for the remaining costs of the radio systems for both police and fire will be coming from a grant that will be submitted when the grant process is open. This is expected to be awarded in next year's fiscal budget sometime in July two thousand sixteen. Four, the security cameras, lobby, uh, lobby updates for the Public Safety Headquarters have all been designed and funds are available through the current grant. These updates will be completed in the future once the asbestos issues have been mitigated. The future possibility of the police moving out of the building has also been considered in these security applications. Five, lastly, the new computer system has been designed and the funds for these purchases have been made available, again, through current grants. The expectation is to have the information transferred from the current system over to the new Tri-Tech system throughout the next six months. The new system will be utilized once the regional center is up and running. Uh, there are a few, these are a few of the major issues that have been worked out throughout the last year or so. The projected approximate date that the regional center will be up and fully capable to perform the necessary functions to shut down uh, the current West Boylston Communications Center looks to be around November two thousand sixteen. So I'm the two chiefs, and I see the red chief is present tonight.
Do you think they had Tom?
Nope, that's pretty much it. You know, the projects had its ups and downs, and one of them was that the initial plan was to have, yeah, radio communication from West Boylston to the Wachusett Mountain, back to Holden. And during all the survey and sightlines, that they concluded that this tree line has gotten too high for that means of communication any longer. And that's when this cable had to get brought into the picture as a more reliable type of communication system between the two towns. And, uh, like the letter said, the light department stepped up and met with us and have been very instrumental in getting that going. And it'll benefit, you know, all departments, so.
Any others?
Uh, number three, it talks about Motorola radios, uh, probably five years ago now, there's sixty-five thousand in each of the police and fire budgets. Is that gonna go away and get turned back to the capital investment with this grant, or is that, some of that money gonna be needed?
Some of that's gonna be needed from both sides. Some of the, um, not so much in that, but like laptops for my communication needs are gonna need to be upgraded and that wasn't part of the grant. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe that money is gonna be used somewhere else, but I'll get back to you one day.
If my memory is correct, it was, it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars specifically earmarked for Motorola radios and sixty-five went into each budget. It could be for communications equipment, I don't know.
I think it was communications.
What, it wasn't just Motorola radios?
I don't think so. Communications.
If you could just let me know what, what, what the, what that's gonna shake out to.
I don't think it needed, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's special in that.
No, it sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, for coming on.
Can, well, can I just ask something? You know how many years, Tom, this has been going on, trying to regionalize this? Three, four?
I'm sorry? Just with Holden, you're asking just with Holden?
I mean, regionalized with Holden, not with Worcester. That was another whole, two or three years.
Oh, Ruttland. I have files that go back to, I believe it was like two thousand eight. They talked about regionalizing.
Yeah, okay. I know it's been a long time.
I think Holden, Holden's been, like you said, three, four years.
Three or four years, just to get older.
But Ruttland was...
That was even farther back, and Worcester was the first one.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Big enough.
It's not, it's not easy to do, we talk about it all the time.
Town administration search committee discussion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before, um, uh, before we discuss the manner, uh, by which the board will evaluate the town administrator candidates, um, I'd like to ask that we, uh, take a couple of moments to talk about, uh, some prerequisites. For newly installed West Boylston town administrator to truly hit the ground running, she or he must have a, a competent and stable team of, uh, of professionals to work with. That is presently the case, but as you know, our finance, uh, uh, department is in transition. Um, I truly hope that certain members of that team don't transition out of our organization entirely. Um, and we'll know that, uh, that answer on or about December, uh, uh, second. I'm pretty optimistic about, uh, about that. That's a key piece to have in place for an incoming, uh, town administrator. Of equal importance, Mr. Chairman, is the retention of, um, what I, who we all think is our organizational linchpin, Nancy Lucia. Um, after thirty-one years of service, she still loves her job. And while she's not an immediate, uh, uh, flight risk, I, you know, I beg her pardon that people in our age group, uh, Nancy and I's age group, uh, often think about the next phase of their, uh, of their lives. Um, I can tell you that our organizational interests are best served by Nancy's continued service to the, uh, to the town. And after many discussions with her on this matter, um, I know that her interests are best served by being a contracted, uh, employee to the town under Mass General laws, Chapter one oh eight N, for a period of time that significantly overlaps the first term of the incoming town administrator. So, um, accordingly, I ask the board, uh, allow me to enter into contract negotiations with Ms. Lucia for this, uh, uh, for this purpose. The parties to the contract, Mr. Chairman, by statute would be Ms. Lucia and the Board of Selectmen. So...
Does anybody have any discussion?
Someone, I think it's a good idea.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now, search committee. We, uh, downed two people, I believe.
From the current?
From the current, there's maybe had. I would, uh, in just my recommendation, is one of the Board of Selectmen be on the new search committee. And I think the fair way to do it is to put everybody's name and draw, uh, name, to see who would be on it, unless someone doesn't wanna be on it. I just think, I think it's important that one of us be on this committee.
I have a question. Can I ask how it was done in the past? And at the same time, I do not have the time with my job at this point that I could really commit, so I would withdraw my name from even, um, getting on the committee. I've got teacher negotiation contracts and other things going that will keep me busy enough. So how have we done it in the past?
Well, the last time we had a town administrator, the Board of Selectmen was the search committee. So it wasn't an issue about whether one was a member and not, we were, it was just us. But now they've changed the laws, I guess, and we can't be just us like it was last time.
I know the town of Wexford just went through this and they did have one of their selectmen on the board.
No, no, I...
You're right, we can the whole board out.
No, no, the last time we picked a town administrator, it was the Board of Selectmen, it was the search committee. Um, so when you were asking how it was the last time, it wasn't.
I think the, uh, the number was good. I just think that, uh, one of us should be on it. And I think we're gonna need one more person, because I know two people dropped out there on the last search committee.
How many are on it now?
Five, isn't it?
It's a five member board, and this three are three now, Tom? Um, I think that's right.
We never received a reservation from anybody.
But you don't know if this...
I did talk to Mr. Plandill, he said he can't do it again.
He cannot?
And you talked to, uh...
Jim Ryan said he cannot do it.
So we, so I guess, just because the other three haven't been spoken to, the other three might not be able to do it.
I don't know if they're involved in...
I think we should reach out to them, see if they wanna be on it again, and then we can decide who we go. I, I think it's, I don't see an advantage to putting one member of the board on. It's, I don't, I don't, I just don't see the advantage to it. I don't think it would've changed the outcome the first time. I think we would've, I think the committee was clear what they sent us. They said we sent you the top two, and the next two were not the next two. They were the, you wanted three or four, so I, I don't think it would've changed the situation. I think, uh, the search committee, you know, I've been told there is a way that the whole board could vote on it if it's not in public. If we have all the applications given to us and we rate them somehow and turn them over to the town, to the town administrator or to the, to Nancy, that would not be, uh, in violation of any...
Really?
Then how do you interview? You just interview the top three?
Then you pick, then we, then we pick the top three or four.
However it came out.
That's a mirror image of a town manager evaluation process or a town administrator evaluation process. Um, folks do that when they're evaluating their incumbent.
Right, that's how we do it, yeah.
We don't violate any open meeting law, because we're not discussing these, we're just deciding which, which floor we want. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that's not true. I'm saying that's, I haven't heard that before.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess the question that arises is that, let, let's just say we have fifteen applicants and, you know, we rate them, one through fifteen. So, one, two, and three. The one that gets the most is number one, the one that gets the next most, two, three, four. But we've never talked to them. Now we have to tell them, without ever discussing, ever having a discussion with them, that they are now our finalists, but they've never been interviewed. You may, just because they look good on a piece of paper doesn't mean you like them.
Yeah.
And, and we would've never had a chance. So, my, and, well, not mine, but what we understood from Mr. Gammon, because there's no one else to refer to, is that a lot of people wouldn't be in favor of being named a finalist in that circumstance because they might get here and you hate them because you talked to them, you know, so...
Now they're outed to their current employers.
But they, yeah, they put their name out that they were finalists. So we put their name out that they were finalists. Um, in the last search committee, obviously, he interviewed these people, however many they interviewed, I don't have any idea.
I think eight, I think.
They interviewed eight and came up with four out of the eight. We would end up having four and just, say, as an example, and interview them. Would never have spoken to them prior. So I don't, I, I guess, I'm not against it in a way because, I don't know, I just wanna speed this thing up. Um, with dreadfully dragging this on.
Yeah.
Kind of like the bin thing, I imagine. But, um, I, I don't want somebody not to, maybe one might be very good, withdraw their name because they don't wanna be considered a finalist when they've never had a chance to speak. Uh, you, is that what I'm, see what I'm saying?
I, I understand. I think the issue was, hold on one second, let him, let him finish here. Um, I think the issue was if we were to discuss all of the applicants in a meeting, all fifteen would have to be public. That, Mr. Gamon used to say was not a good idea. If all fifteen were public, because if we would discuss it, then they would have to be public. But bringing it down to three or four, I don't think that those people, then they can be interviewed. They're the same as if the search committee gave us three or four and we didn't like them.
No, but, but out of the three or four that the search committee gave us, number one might've been number six on their list until they met them and interviewed them. Then they became number one. We're not gonna have that opportunity. We're just gonna say he's number one.
Right.
Uh, he's in the top three, and, and that's that. I mean, I guess my fear is that if it doesn't work, we're gonna do this again, we can't, we'll be the...
The, um...
Still might not work.
We're just gonna name Jim, the full-time guy.
My other, my other problem is if I'm going for a job, I don't want my current employers to know that if I'm gonna get tossed to the side. So, I'm not, if I, if it was me, I would withdraw my name because I wouldn't want it out in public. It's different when it's down to the last two or three people. But if we're starting...
No, but they would only be the last two or three people.
Right, right, the last two or three.
Those are the only ones that would be in public. The last two or three would only be the public.
Yeah, nobody else would be public.
Nobody would be public.
But we, like Kevin, I, I agree with Mr. McCormick that we, we wouldn't get a face-to-face. And the other issue I have is if you have a five-member board and you have two selectmen, those numbers don't seem good to me. That's my own personal, two, you know, two selectmen on a board of five, um, I'm not sure that's the right balance either, but that's just my own personal...
I think the way that...
Well, three makes a majority, of course.
I think the way the search committee did it was very good. They spoke to all of us. Um, so if one member's on the board, then that, that search committee might be looking at that board member saying, well, what do you think about this? What do you think the board's gonna say about this? That way, if we're out of it and we come to that meeting, I think two at a time went or one at a time went, however it was, I think that went fine.
I don't think there should be members of selecting on the committee.
I just put it out there.
But I mean, I think any, oh, I think we're waiting for, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a question?
You have a question, Kevin?
No, no, I guess not, no, never mind.
All right, so what, what do we wanna do? Do you want to get some more people on the committee?
No, I think we wanna see if the other three still wanna be on the committee, and then we wanna post what's available. Or post, we gotta post, it's posted anyway.
This is gonna be open November, uh, fifteen.
First of all, we need to see...
The resumes are in by November fifteen.
Eleven, yeah. You got eleven days.
First of all, we have to reach out to the three that haven't been spoken to by somebody on this board.
Yes.
And they've been told, um, and see if they wanna stay on the committee, and then we know what we need to fill it. Is it, is it, is there already a...
It can be done, that can be done tomorrow.
Already posting out saying we're looking for people for the search committee?
No.
Oh, so we don't, so we're gonna need to know how many spots we have, first of all.
Um, and you really have to, you know, you really have to wrap your game plan up by, you know, later than you have.
I think today.
Preferably today, preferably tonight.
And the, the things coming, we gotta get on the ground running.
You gotta be ready.
Because we got the holidays coming up, so do we interview just before Christmas?
Yep.
Or do we do it right after Christmas? I don't know, but I would say we wanna do it as soon as we can.
Yep.
Um, if we got them on November fifteenth, they start the interview, of course, we're running Thanksgiving, so it's gonna be hard. But if they do it, get it done, and we set up an appointment date, we could have our interviews easily...
Christmas Eve.
Yeah, Christmas Eve.
Here we go again. We always...
That shows whether the guy's committed.
No, there's no way, I don't think there's any way we're gonna, I mean, if they, if the applications come in, we don't even have a committee right now. And if the applications come in the fifteenth, I mean, they're gonna have to meet, they're gonna have to call each one of them and have an interview, the ones that they want to interview, so I, I don't know. I think, first of all, I, I assume that the posting was out, but let's, I think at a minimum, we should put a posting out saying we're looking for people for the search committee.
Or just leave it at three. Why can't we just leave it, if the three agree, why not just leave it at three? Why do we have to have five?
I, I'd like to put it out and see.
I make a motion that we have the committee existing of three members.
Oh, yeah, I don't like that either.
And we need to move forward with it.
I'll second.
Kevin, second.
Yeah, five there.
And special.
I, uh, I don't think three's enough. I think we should, we have more than, there were more than five applicant, applicants that were looking for it. I, I think we would not have an issue filling... I, I think we would not have an issue filling the other two slots in the search committee.
I agree.
And not to, not to mention, I think the night I went to my meeting with them, 'cause they were very busy, there were only three or four there that night. So, that means one couldn't be there, so.
The problem with three.
If that's the case, if one can't be there, they're down to two. And now two are making the decision, you know. I think we need to, most importantly, we need to see who's on the committee and who wants to be on the committee. Um, is that I?
Well, if we don't do it tonight, we have to do it by the next, the eighteenth is our next meeting, we need to do it by then.
I'm pushing, I'm pushing we have a, a selection process tonight. 'Cause if we wait much longer, we're gonna be another six months before we can move forward. And I think the selection numbers of what we're getting is going down and down, and we didn't like the first round.
So, do you want to, uh, put out, see if we get two more people on the, uh, things we have, a five-person number, and get them ready to go for the fifteenth?
Well, we keep saying, we want to, keep saying we want to get two more. We don't know if the other three want to do it again.
There's been a motion, so we have to.
Let's put off a search committee people.
Yeah, just put a post.
First, we need a motion.
Okay. Any discussion on Shavon's motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Prove.
No.
So, I would just say that we have the, I guess if the motion needs to be, we have the same committee of five, and then town administrator Nancy just puts out a thing saying, "We're looking for members for the search committee." Those other people would have to reach out to Nancy and say that, "I'd like to stay on," and other people would have to, and then we can.
And if you know anybody that you think would be good, you go to right now.
And we need a deadline on this.
I, we.
We cannot wait a month for these people to get back to us.
I think we should, we should give them, uh, today's the fourth.
We gotta have them by the eighteenth, and then we.
When's our next meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
We set the committee on the eighteenth, and that's it.
Then the deadline should be two or three days before our meeting, so we, so when we come back in two weeks, we are looking at these people and we are moving forward.
And handing them the resume.
Right, 'cause if we wait till the eighteenth, then that means it's another two weeks before we go.
No, 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 I said the eighteenth would be.
Right, but give them the deadline.
We have to be in the Friday before, that's when we always get our agenda, then we'll know.
Right.
So, we're making on, which is the fourteenth, I believe? Thirteenth?
Oh, great, Friday the thirteenth.
I'm excited.
They have to be by the Saturday, the fifteenth, you said?
She's thirteen.
No, fifteenth, the fifteenth the last day of the, uh, application.
So, that's a Saturday. If the fourteenth is a Friday.
They may want to be anyway, so.
We need them in this office by the thirteenth.
Thirteenth is Friday.
I've got it on.
I'm saying about the applicants.
I had it on my calendar for that Monday.
The applicants, not the search committee applicants, I'm saying the applicants for the job.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you were talking to.
Fifteenth is the Sunday.
Fourteenth's not a Friday.
No, fifteenth is Friday.
Who's got a phone?
It doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter. By the, you know, they're all, you know, they're due before your next meeting. You know, the applications are due before your next meeting.
And then we, so we set the search committee at the next meeting.
At the end of your next meeting, you should seat a five-member search committee and hand them their, hand them the application.
Nancy can have the packages and we just, and ask them to all come in, so we can talk to them. Tell them what we want, here it is, here's the, here's the timeline we want.
That's all we need to know now.
Well, do we even have to talk to the search committee? We already did that before.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
We would, because it could be at least two new members, it could be three or four new members.
And, and last time, wait, I didn't sign these, because there's a problem.
There you go.
There's a problem.
I saw that, please, Jim.
So, one on, I'll do a cross and cross, okay.
All right, so Mr. Rucho, uh, made a motion, there hasn't been a second, uh, to have a five-member, a five-member committee. Is there a consensus on that now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll second it, but are we, right now, we don't, we have, we know of two that have verbally said that they're resigning.
That's why I like the number, give us a fixed number, we'll make it work.
Of the five-member committee, my understanding is the other three members.
We don't know.
If they, they're, we don't have to reseat them.